Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The City of Peabody zoning board of appeals meets remotely tonight in accordance with Massachusetts general laws and Governor Baker's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This special meeting of the zoning board of appeals will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. Individuals may participate remotely in the meeting via a participation platform called Zoom. Tonight, I am going to introduce the board members. We have, I'll put myself last, Stevens Zalotis, Dan Sensabaugh, Julie Picardi, Barry Osborne, Eddie Colbert, Keith Slattery, myself, Rhian Bazazagallucci. We also have with us our consultant Ezra Glenn and our director of community development, Kurt Bellevance. Our King Street team led by attorney Panos. We also have this evening Scott Thornton. And Al Chow. Excuse me. We have the city engineer Will Pollitz. We have from World Tech Rod Emery. We have a special guest this evening, Mayor Ted Battencourt. Tonight's presentation on for 15 King Street will be a traffic presentation, and we hope that with this presentation, it addresses some of the concerns that we had at our last meeting and also sheds a great deal of light on what they propose to do moving forward. However, before we begin, I'm going to let Mayor Battencourt, who would like to say a few things this evening, I'm going to let him speak, and then we will have a question and answer time when all of that is taken care of, we will go right into traffic. Mayor Battencourt, if you please.
Great. Thank you, Mrs. Galucci. Can you hear me? Okay, great. I want to thank everybody for their time tonight, giving me the opportunity to be heard on these important items. And first, I want to thank all of you for your work on the ZBA. The ZBA has a tremendous amount of important work, and I'm really appreciative of everybody's time and efforts. We have an excellent board here, and I'm very grateful for that. And I hope everybody's doing well during these crazy and difficult times. I hope everybody's safe and healthy. I wanted to speak tonight about affordable housing in general. I've been mayor now nine years, and I don't think a week has gone by where I haven't been contacted about a development project in the city, a residential development project. It's, like I said, on a weekly basis, a proposal is coming my way, sometimes multiple proposals, and a significant number of those requests are for affordable housing. And as we all know, Massachusetts general laws, chapter 40B, I think it's something we're all familiar with pretty well after a number have come our way. But it requires that every housing in a community, city or town, that 10% of the housing units need to be affordable, need to be affordable units. If we do not have 10%, then a developer, a petitioner could request straight-to-mass housing for a chapter 40B housing development. And that would mean that they bypass all of our zoning bylaws, height restrictions, rear side, rear setbacks, side setbacks, front setbacks, all of those. I think the only thing that we would still have a say in is in terms of wetlands and things of that nature. And we've had a number of issues here in the city of Peabody because we do not have 10%. And I'll get into the numbers in a moment, but a little bit about history. When the 2010 census came out, our numbers changed dramatically in terms of our number of housing units and our number of affordable. The big additions at the time. Brooksbury Village brought on about 2,000 units of housing into the city of Peabody. Also, on Dearborn Road, the development over there brought 400 units of housing to the city of Peabody. That's 2,400 units of housing were brought onto the city of Peabody at that last census. Now, at the time, the city was allowed to offer to the developers a buyout of affordable housing, which means that a developer would come in, build all that housing, and not be required to put in 10% or 15% or whatever the case may be to be affordable. So those 2,400 units at the time came forward, and there were no affordable units built. The decision was made at the time to take the buyout, which was a significant number. That number was taken instead of the requirement to put in affordable units. So we went from being above 10% to being then well below, almost 250 units below the 10% requirement when that decision and that happened. And that happened in the 2010 census. This has created a problem for Peabody in many ways. It's damaging to Peabody neighborhoods, potentially to put in these large 40B developments into a neighborhood. We've seen that now with a couple that are in front of us. And also, it takes away the city's ability to negotiate. It puts us in a very difficult position to go to a developer, to work with a developer over a period of time. And I'm not singling out developers or any one in particular, but it just puts cities and towns in a difficult position to be able to go to a developer and say, no, that's too big of a project. We need to go in this direction, or we require this, we require that. Because right away, a developer just says, well, if the city doesn't agree, we're going to go with the 40B proposal. And again, puts us in a very difficult position to be able to respond to that. What I'm asking for here today is to support the zoning, the zoning board of appeals, to have you folks support a safe harbor request to mass housing and to the Department of Housing and Community Development, specific to the King Street proposal. A safe harbor, I think, as many of you know, would put a hold, and effectively put a hold on all projects for a period of time, and that would be a period of time that the state would allow. The code of mass regulations, 760 code of mass regulations allows the zoning board of appeals, they have to be the petitioner, to seek special, to seek safe harbor within 15 days of a hearing being opened. Now, I fully understand and I'm aware that the zoning board of appeals, you opened this hearing back in September. So that 15 days has expired. However, I do believe that we can bring forward the safe, safe harbor request under a different format, and I'll explain that to everybody shortly. But there are three grounds under the code of mass regulations that allow the safe harbor. The first one is that city has 10% of their housing units are affordable, 10%. The second grounds is that there's 1.5% of the geographic area of the city would be deemed only for affordable housing. We're not even close to that. That's not even something we can consider, but that's the second ground. The third grounds is that we are making substantial progress towards achieving our 10% affordable housing here in the city of Peabody. I strongly believe we have arguments in that we have 10% affordable in the city, and also that we've made substantial progress in achieving that goal. You look at the mass general laws, chapter 40B, intent of that law, it's the intent in general is to hold cities and towns that do not have affordable housing, hold them to requiring that that be a part of the community, that that 10% be sought, and that people from all economic classes are allowed to, to live in that city or town. I believe in Peabody. We firmly believe in that spirit. I know I do. I believe our track record over the last number of years has backed that up, that we are, as a community, have taken extraordinary steps to maintain our city being affordable. And I feel like we've always been like that in the city of Peabody. We've always been a welcoming community. Immigrants from across the world have come to the city of Peabody to build their lives, their lives for their family, seek work. And that's something we're very proud of here in our community. We have always embraced racial, ethnic, economic diversity. We celebrate that every year with the International Festival. We have built our city as a welcoming, welcoming community to all people from wherever they may come from. And again, that's something I know all of us are proud of. And I would like to talk about some of the measures and efforts we have made as a community to live up to the spirit of chapter 40B and to live up to the spirit of being a welcoming community for all people. And again, these are efforts that I'm extremely proud of. The biggest one I want to touch on first is in January, actually, before I get to the specific examples, let me tell you where we are in terms of our numbers. We have 22,135 housing units in Peabody, 22,135 housing units, according to the Department of Housing and Community Development, their subsidized housing inventory. We are right now, according to the latest number, we are at 2,051 units of affordable housing. That's at 9.3%. That's where we stand. So the first big effort we took as a community recently, and that was done in January of 2019, was regarding the Tannery One Crown and Shield property. And some of you may remember this, this was certainly a big issue in the city, and something that I really want to focus on for just a moment. At the time, Crown and Shield Development had put out on the market that they were selling the Tannery apartment units, which are 248 units of affordable housing. 248 for the last 40 years at that location have been affordable. That 40-year agreement ended, which meant that they could sell, Crown and Shield could sell those as market rate units. What we did as a community, we came together, decided that we wanted to protect the residents that are living in those affordable units, protect them for decades to come, to make sure that those units count as affordable. We met with myself, Kurt Bellevie, and Stacy Burnson, our city council, Mass Housing, the Department of Health, excuse me, Department of Housing and Community Development, and Wynn Companies. Wynn Companies ended up buying that property for over $36 million, which was a significant investment. We, as a city, with unanimous votes from the city council, unanimous votes from the Community Preservation Commission, we put forward $1.7 million of our community preservation funds and our inclusionary zoning funds right to this project, and which was pretty much all the money we had that was geared towards affordable housing. We had been saving that money, that 1.7 million, for a big project to make sure we got over that 10%. However, because of the strong feelings we had about protecting those neighbors, those residents that live in, in the Tannery One, preserving those as affordable housing, we felt that that was the right investment to make. We entered into a new 40-year agreement, for the next 40 years, those units will stay affordable. If we did not take that action, we would have gone down from 9.3% to 8.1%. We would have lost 1.2%. We would have lost 248 units of housing that was a part of our inventory for that. We stepped up for our residents. We stepped up for affordable housing. We stepped, stepped up for the spirit of 40B, and we made that investment, and it was unanimous across the board. We wanted to do that for the city. Additionally, we have approved two friendly 40B projects. Friendly 40B, as I think you know, are just projects that are 40B, but they come to this, to the mayor, they come to the city council and ask for support. There were two projects that I have supported over the last year and a half that are going to bring 176 units of affordable housing to the city of Peabody. The first one was the Monastero Group. They have 60 units of housing at 55 Newberry Street, right next to Sonic. The Department of Housing and Community Development quickly approved that project, and the zoning board, you folks approved that project, I believe, last year. And I think some activity started to take place at the site, and I'm told they're moving forward with the development. But those 60 units count for us once the zoning board of appeals approve them. The second one is the residences at Farm Avenue, which I think is a terrific project, 116 units at 27 Rear Farm Avenue. It was approved by the Department of Housing and Community Development, and now it's in front of the zoning board of appeals, and my understanding is that's going to be voted on in the very near future. That's 116 units of affordable housing that has been approved, and will be coming to the city of Peabody through that development. So I look at it, it's 248 units we preserved and protected at the Tannery One, 176 units of new housing that's going to be coming to the city of Peabody. That's 426, I hope I'm right, 425 approximately, units of preserved or new housing that's coming to the city of Peabody, just for affordable. That puts us from 8.1% if we had lost those 240. Do that, that gives us safe harbor by being at that 10% starting the year 2021. To me, this strongly evidences a clear commitment to affordable housing here in this city of Peabody. We care for affordable housing, we want affordable housing, we need affordable housing, and we've stepped up to do that. So to me, it evidences that we've achieved 10%, and it also means that we've achieved substantial progress, right? Which I think we have an outstanding argument for. Of all the investment, financial, the investments in terms of approved projects, to me, that shows substantial project. We've nearly jumped two percentage points, which I think is unheard of in terms of the investment that's been made in a year and a half, two-year period. To go from 2,051 units of housing to galget over, well over 22,000, I think is important and really shows again our clear effort. Other measures we have taken, now, I know these do not count towards our affordable housing inventory. These are things that cannot be part of our 10%, cannot be part of our housing units, but they do evidence our strong commitment to the spirit of 40B and to having affordable housing here in the city of Peabody. The first one is we have 742 units of manufactured housing, mobile homes here in the city of Peabody. That is overseen, all of those units are overseen by a mayor-appointed rent control board. And the purpose of the rent control board is to keep those units affordable for all residents. To me, that shows again a commitment to the city of Peabody to have affordable housing. Very few cities and towns in Massachusetts have a rent control board that oversees mobile homes, manufactured housing. We in the city of Peabody do, and we've had it for a long time. The second thing we've done is the city council voted to approve family accessory living areas in the city of Peabody, fallas, commonly known as. Those are additions to a house, maybe the use of a basement to allow for a family member to move into an existing home. And that's something that's been a tremendous opportunity to keep families together for financial reasons, for medical reasons, whatever the case may be. It affords them the opportunity to stay together as a family and save money. We have over 450 approved fallas in the city of Peabody. I, for one, have one, and it's been tremendous to keep my family together. And they've been a blessing for many families for financial reasons, and also, again, for others as well. And I, and I think, again, that gives people an affordable, independent way of living here in the city of Peabody. It doesn't count towards our number, but again, it is evidence of a strong commitment. The third one is group homes. We have over 50 group homes in our community that are often governed by social organizations, social agencies that bring folks that need special treatment, medical treatment, bring them together, three, four, five people to live in a home, and that is often for financial reasons as well. Medical, certainly, but financial as well. It's a way to promote affordable, independent living for people that may have some special need or special reason for extra care. We also, several years ago, put an inclusionary zoning provision together. The city council required that all development of over eight units of housing require 15% to be affordable. So we're going above what the state has asked us in terms of 10%. We're now requiring every development over eight units requires 15%, which, again, these do not count, but they are examples of a commitment, and they evidence a real desire to move forward with affordable housing in the city and continue the welcoming community as it has always been. Now, what brings us to the King Street application? I think everybody is very familiar with the history here. Hemisphere filed a special permit request originally with the city council for 110 units of housing for over 55. They withdrew, which certainly they have the right to do. They withdrew that application and then submitted a 40B application to Mass Housing. Mass Housing did approve that very quickly, I believe, and that is what is in front of you today, and I know there's been a number of hearings on this. The reason that I believe that we are allowed to move forward with the safe harbor request and the 15-day requirement is that the governor's emergency order, which is chapter 53 of the Acts of 2020, allows for a tolling for certain time provisions for municipal boards. That had been extended to December 1st, this past December 1st. I believe that running from December 1st for these 15 days allows us to bring forward our safe harbor request to Mass Housing, to the Department of Housing and Community Development before December 15th. And I'd be asking the zoning board of appeals to support that request and move forward with that. I would be asking to continue for a year or until the data and information from the next census comes out, which has just taken place over the past year, the 2020 census. So I expect we'll be getting those numbers and to determine where we are in the near future. I know that's a lot to throw at everybody. I'm throwing numbers and acronyms and a lot of information at you, but what really bugs me and, and angers me, quite frankly, is when people say that we do not, as a community, care for affordable housing, and we're not doing the right thing. I think time and again, Peabody has backed, backed up itself as being a welcoming community for all people, all needs, all economic ranges, whatever the case may be, we welcome people here in the city of Peabody. And we have stepped up in countless ways over the last decade or more since, since the census changed our numbers dramatically. And now I feel confident that we're at our 10%, but even more confident is that we have made substantial progress, nearly two full points, to go from 8.1% to 10%. I think that shows the commitment and what we're all about here in the city. And I wanted to take that opportunity to talk about that and then ask you for the safe harbor to allow us to figure out what's best for our community and where we can go from here to make sure that the development is correct for our community, that our neighborhoods are protected, traffic issues, parking issues, utilities, our infrastructure. All of those things have to be taken into account when we welcome development into the city, which I do believe you do need development in a community to continue and to improve. But it has to be done in a conscientious manner, it has to be done in the, in the, in the right manner that works with the neighborhoods that we represent here in the city of Peabody. And there's ones that have worked, and there's ones that do not work. And I think this gives us an opportunity to kind of take stock of where we are, figure out the direction we want to go, and then move forward in that way. But by 40B, it takes away all of the ability to negotiate and work with developers, where they can just say, hey, look, you don't agree with us? We're going to go to chapter 40B and appeal to the state. And the state has made it very clear time and time again, and I can cite a number of examples and governors' orders that have come out to cities and towns that support the real need for affordable housing and that the state wants affordable housing in communities. So again, sorry, there's a lot of information I threw at you. I'm happy to answer any questions. Our city solicitor wasn't able to join us tonight, but I think I can pre-speak for him and try to answer any questions that I can and give any further information. But thank you, Mrs. Galucci. That was quite a, quite a lot that I threw out there.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Do we have anyone that would like to speak now?
The chair, if I could.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. And may I, I couldn't agree with you more, Mayor. As a matter of fact, I'm very lucky to have a wife that, when I ask her to find, can put her fingers on just about anything. And I certainly do agree with the city's effort to afford, to advance affordable housing, because she was able to get this newspaper clippings when the mayor and I wore a different hat. And I think it goes back quite a few years when we first brought in inclusionary zoning, and it was not a very easy thing to do. I think it says somewhere in this article under the, the leadership of a great city council president, but I can't be sure if it actually said that. But I will say this, Mayor, that I do agree with everything you say and, and, and the effort that the city has put forward. But when it comes to this one, I'm going to do it with, with, with comment, because it's, it's a little frustrating that when we, we crest the safe harbor, it's, it's something that with this development, we've talked about already, and we were sort of got the impression from the city that we did not qualify. And I think we had an opportunity to pursue this, maybe even in the time when we could have met the deadline. And for some reason, there was a disconnect that we didn't pursue it. And so I don't, I don't know if it's because of misinformation, COVID, or whatever, but it, it just seems like whenever we get into a 40B situation, the first thing I want to do is I make sure that every department, every department head, everybody in the certified is notified that we're hearing a 40B, because we need permits from every department head. And to be honest with you, that includes legal to guide us with this thing. So I'm certainly going to support pursuing the safe harbor, because I, I agree with everything you said about affordable housing, that we are definitely, and we, we know we want it, and we're doing everything we can to provide it. But you're right, we can't let the developers come in, cock blush, and build exactly what they want to build. But to that end, we need the support of everybody in the city to work together on this. Sometimes you feel when we're working on these things, we're, we're pulling in different directions. Like this safe harbor, when you brought this up, I was like, wow, we, we discussed this. Why, why haven't we gone forward with this up until now? And, and I'm not putting any blame on anybody, I'm just saying that as we go forward with these 40Bs, we, I agree with you, we have to do everything in our power to make sure that they are crafted the way the city wants them crafted. And they take into consideration not just third-party review, where a whole bunch of consultants get together and satisfy water and traffic and, you know, it's like the big three, you know? Oh, if we can just satisfy the big three, then this, we can improve this thing. Well, it's not, doesn't work that way. This is comprehensive, one bite at the apple. No one's going to get the other opportunity to look at neighborhood issues, local desirable need, those type of quality of life, all those things that come into play with special permits. It's sort of get cast aside when it comes to 40B. Well, these issues are just as important as water, traffic, and everything else. So Mayor, I, I couldn't agree with you more, but I just know that going forward, that maybe we, as a, as a, as a board, whenever we look at 40B, instead of looking for consultants, and Ezra's been great, he's been very informative, but I think we really need legal, we, we need some legal help here. And we're going to come to you to say, Mayor, you, you either got to open up the city's legal department to us, or we're going to have to hire our own. Because it's very obvious as we sort of, I hope we haven't missed a boat, I hope you're right in saying that, you know, we have a great argument to present, but I just hope we didn't miss the boat because we legally missed the date, you know? And, and that would just be devastating to us. But it's not the do-all, end-all either. We still have to approve this thing, and I, and I, and I'm going to be honest with you, we're going to approve this probably, I won't say we're going to improve it, or we're not going to approve it. But I can tell you this, there'll be conditions that the developer might like that he might not like, you know? But I'm, I'm a firm believer in, you know, we're the only ones that, you know, the, the department heads take care of the, you know, the professional, the consultants, the engineering type of things. It's solely up to us to do the quality life, local desirable need, and all those things that also go with a comprehensive permit. So I, I hope you do this, I hope we're successful. I just want you to think that we, we did discuss this previously to your request, and it didn't happen for some reason. So whether we, we identify that disconnect and close it, because this isn't the only one we're looking at. You know, we, we have others ones we have to look at, and then they're going to keep coming. So I, I think what we do here going forward is, is going to have a big say in how we're going to address future 40Bs that come before us. Thank you.
Ms. Galucci, may I respond to that?
Yes.
Great, thank you, Mr. Osborne. And yeah, you were a big part of a lot of this work that we did to, to show how serious we are about affordable housing. I remember those council meetings were some pretty good debates we had, and your points are right on. And all I can say is, right now, we are living in a disconnected world. We are not on the same page in so many aspects, just because of COVID-19. And it's so difficult to, to be engaged and be on top of things in terms of, of community meetings. And that's why the governor has gone forward in giving this ability to toll deadlines, to push deadlines off, to allow cities and towns a little bit extra time to, to focus in on issues, meet as a community. I mean, I can't tell you, I mean, COVID has just devastated so many businesses and so many families, and it's had its effect here in the city of And it's had its effect here in the city of Peabody in terms of our workforce, through our DPW, through legal, through City Hall. Everywhere it's had its effect. And I think that a lot of times these things, because of the disconnection, because of the people being away, it's caused things to kind of stand pat and not move forward in many ways. So that's what, to me, is the intent of the tolling statute. And it has been extended before. The governor, I think it was initially, and I think some members of the committee may know, initially it had been extended to July first. Then it had been extended to December first. Again, I think as a way for cities and towns to communicate better. It's so difficult and it's been spoken about for a number of months now to have these community meetings on Zoom. It's difficult for city councillors, it's difficult for board members, it's difficult for the public. And it creates quite a bit of challenges. And that's the purpose behind this tolling. So I do think we have a very compelling argument to be able to file before December, honor before December fifteenth. And I do think we have a compelling argument to move forward with these safe harbor requests, but your points are very well made.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anybody else right now?
Through the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for joining us tonight and outlining all the efforts the city has made over the last decade or so to enhance the amount of affordable housing here in the city of Peabody. I wasn't personally aware of the numbers, what percentage we were at. I was aware of the ten percent threshold, so I appreciate your joining here tonight to explain that to us and to the city for anyone who's tuning in. Certainly think we do have a, it seems like we have a good case as far as substantial progress goes and potentially even the ten percent amount of affordable units. I guess my only issue or concern is whether or not we missed that deadline. But I did have a chance from between the last meeting and this meeting to review the governor's tolling statute. And I don't think it's a black and white. I think it's, I did notice that it had been extended to December first. I wonder what our opening of the public hearing does to that? If we were able to open a public hearing, but then not, you know, within fifteen days, send the safe harbor notice to the Department of Community Housing. That I'm not a hundred percent sure on, but your argument for why we would qualify for safe harbor, I think is swaying my decision as to whether or not I think it makes sense to at least submit that as a motion tonight as far as making that request to the Department of Community Housing as to a safe harbor provision on this project. So again, I don't know how it will play out. I can, I, you know, at first I was aware of the rules and the CMR. It seems pretty clear that it's fifteen days after the opening of the public hearing. But you know what? Nothing's clear in this twenty twenty, in this year of COVID and everything seems to be murky. And certainly, I know that we've been playing a lot of catch-up as a zoning board and, you know, in all the various different departments are doing the same. So I would understand that the, what the intent of the governor's rule, the tolling order, was probably to account for situations such as this. So that's sort of what I'm thinking. But I am curious to hear from Attorney Panos and any other board members to see what their thoughts are as well.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just a couple of questions, I guess I have. I've been trying to read through nine sixty CMR while we've been doing this and try to get myself back up to speed on it. And one thing I can't seem to find an answer to is it may not be in there. It is, if we are to make this motion and if we were to approve or allow this motion, what happens if it's denied? What happens with the other deadlines? What happens to our position since we've essentially taken a position of a denial by way of trying to enforce the safe harbor? And does that negatively impact us in any way moving forward with the application? I'm not suggesting I have the answer one way or the other. It's just a concern that I couldn't seem to find the answer to in the last twenty-five minutes. And then, Mr. Mayor, the, with respect to the substantial progress, and you cut out a couple of times, and it might have been for one of this times here. I believe looking at the CMRs, it has to be over the last twelve months. So was the Tanner's, were they within that twelve-month timeframe? I don't think I heard you on that.
Yes, thank you, Attorneys Lotus. Good question. So let me take the first one, I guess. I'll go to that one first. So my understanding is that we submit, if it's voted on tonight in the affirmative, we would submit to the Department of Housing and Community Development. They then have to respond within twenty days whether our safe harbor is approved or if it's denied. There's no hearing on it. It is just a decision that's based on what is submitted, based on the pleadings, more or less, what is submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. And then they make the decision from there. So this is not something that is going to carry for months and, well, several months. This is something that's decided pretty quickly to kind of keep the timeframe and keep, you know, so that things are not logged down for too much longer, if that makes sense. The second question you asked, I'm sorry, Steve, if you can say it again?
Sure. It was the, with respect to the two percent, it looks like the third stance coming last twelve months.
Yep. So it was voted on and approved in the spring of two thousand nineteen and then recorded, I believe, in the summer of two thousand nineteen. So the construction is ongoing now. Work's been taking place now. So again, I think that puts us in another gray area that, yes, the votes were submitted right outside the twelve months. However, money was given by the city of Peabody. We just approved money at the last city council meeting, another two hundred thousand, I believe, to go towards this project. So I would say that we do fit under the twelve months because the work is going currently and we've just submitted a significant amount of money to that project within the last twelve months.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair? If I could, to the mayor, Mayor, that was a good question, Council. Steve, Stephen brought up was, what happens to the King Street project if we should go forward and approve this? Do we go forward with this one or does it give us an opportunity to evaluate situation with the affordable housing stock as we go forward?
Yeah, the safe harbor request would be for the King Street project, just being that's the most recent. You know, there's, that's, so that's specific to this project. This project would be on hold. If we are, if the safe harbor is approved, this project would be on hold and it would, again, probably give us the opportunity to go to them and speak on the project. If it's denied, I think you'll be taking this back, right back up in January.
Okay, thank you. And I'm sorry, if I may, one more time through the chair. Mr. Mayor, you just said, just kind of resonated. With respect to, since this is just with respect to fifteen King Street, what happens to Farm Ave and Oak since they're both still pending before the board? Anything? Or are they put on hold pending the decision?
The request that I brought forward is just for King Street. Oak, it's too far gone. That has been pending for a significant time. We didn't feel that this would apply to that. But I just came forward on King Street just because that was the most recent.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair?
Yes.
So it looks like fifty-six point oh five three, this is seven sixty CMR, fifty-six point oh five, section three. We've got fifteen days. Once we submit, the applicant has fifteen days to basically refute what we say. And then there's a thirty-day review period. So I think it potentially, you know, if we were to submit that, we could be talking about forty-five days from now before we know whether or not we're moving forward with this. That's my interpretation. I don't know if anybody else has a different one, but that's my quick read on the fly here.
Attorney, since you're right, I didn't account for the fifteen days. They have their opportunity and deserve their opportunity to respond. And I thought it was twenty days, but it could be thirty days. But yeah, I didn't account for the fifteen days. They get fifteen days once it's submitted for their response.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Panos?
Yes. How are you?
I'm great.
So for the record, my name is Jason Panos, practicing law at two four six Andover Street, Peabody, representing the applicant HDG King LLC. As you mentioned, I'm here with Al Chow, the HDG King Senior Project Manager and Scott Thornton of Vanessa and Associates, who, after we clear up all the safe harbor discussion, I would ask we move forward with that presentation. A little taken aback by the information that's been shared and I want to hopefully bring some clarity to it. And I'll start off with a bit of good news. The good news is that as of November ninth, I pulled the most recent SHI for the city of Peabody and you're at nine point five one percent, not nine point three percent. So already I've gotten you more units. You're approximately a hundred and ten units shy of your ten percent. I will tell you that units do not count toward your ten percent until, or are not eligible, and that is the criteria, are not eligible to be counted until a decision is filed with the city clerk. So you're at nine point five one percent. You cannot assert your statutory minimum, in my opinion, based on having achieved the ten percent. You're just not there yet. With regard to the other matter, which is known as, well, let me talk about safe harbor generally because for reasons I will discuss shortly, assertion of a safe harbor, which must be done by the board and only the board, as was mentioned, is not timely. The COVID order that recently got passed just two days after, or extended after our last hearing on November ninth, does not cover safe harbor. And I'll go into more detail for you momentarily. But I do want to take up the substance of asserting the particular safe harbor that was mentioned, which is known as recent progress toward housing unit minimum. And that is addressed for your reference.
Excuse me, through the chair, if I could?
I would rather not yet. Barry, could we let Jason finish?
Well, you have the chair, I guess.
Thank you.
So that is addressed in fifty-six, seven sixty CMR, fifty-six oh three, subsection five. And that says, and I'm going to read it for you because very, very specific and it's very clear. Recent progress toward a municipality's statutory minimum shall mean that the number of SHI-eligible housing units, that is the number that applies to your ten percent, that have been created within the municipality during the twelve months prior to the date of the comprehensive permit application, evidenced by being inventoried by the department or established according to seven sixty CMR fifty-six oh three, subsection three, as occupied, available for occupancy, or under permit as of that date of the applicant's initial submission to the board is equal to or greater than two percent of the municipality's total housing units as determined in accordance with that previously referenced CMR section, seven sixty CMR fifty-six oh three. That's how we get to your ten percent over time. That's how it's calculated. So according to the numbers that were just put out there, according to the two thousand ten census data, which is what we're at, you have twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five housing units. The city in this case would have to had produced four hundred and thirty-three. That's two percent. I just did that quick calculation. That's two percent of twenty-two thousand one hundred and thirty-five, four hundred and forty-three units of SHI-eligible housing between May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, and May thirteenth, two thousand twenty. That is the period we filed, the date upon which we filed the application with the zoning board of appeals. So you count twelve months back. So May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, to May thirteenth, two thousand twenty, the city had to produce four hundred and forty-three units of SHI-eligible housing. Has the city produced that in that time? Put simply, no. If they did, if it did, and I'm not disparaging by any stretch the efforts that have been made to make the city more affordable in light of this crazy housing boom we've been going through and the crazy property prices. But I want to infuse a dose of reality here. If the city produced four hundred and forty-three units of SHI-eligible housing in the year prior to us submitting the application, we would not be here tonight. We would not be talking about fifteen King Street because the city would be well above its ten percent. And that's a fact. It did not, and here we are. So I'd like to go further to address, and I was not expecting to talk about this provision of the CMR. What I came prepared to discuss were issues that came about subsequent to the last hearing and were raised at the, at the hearing, at the hearing itself on November ninth. And if I may, Madam Chair, I'd like to present those four points. Unless anyone has any questions on the safe harbor. If you feel it would be beneficial, if anyone has any questions of me through you, I'm happy to answer that. It's up to you how you want to handle it because there's going to be more information coming forward.
Barry, did you want to say anything now? Ask? Barry?
No, I, my, my, what I always says, we have a request before the board from the mayor and I didn't think that was appropriate. It was turned into a discussion as to whether we met the ten percent or not. I think the mayor did a good job of laying out his position. He made a request and I thought we should just vote on it. But I have no problem with what's been said so far.
Okay.
It's sort of a procedural matter that I didn't think was really need to take place. Thank you.
So.
May I continue?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So four brief points. Governor Baker's COVID order amendment of November twelfth, just two days, three days after we met on November nine, amending his initial COVID order of April second, basically stay tolls constructive decision timelines through December one. And I'll read directly from the text of the COVID order. Again, it's not legalese, at least in my opinion, you know? And I'm going to try to make this as clear as I possibly can, but I think the language of the order speaks for itself. And as I said, it was put forward in, on November twelfth. And it comes directly out of section seventeen B, Romanet four. And it says, "When a statute, ordinance, bylaw, rule, or regulation provides that a permit shall be considered granted, approved, or denied constructively or otherwise due to a failure of the permit granting authority," that's you, "to act within a specified period of time, the time within which the permit granting authority must act shall be deemed tolled from March tenth to December first, two thousand twenty, unless relief from that deadline has been granted by the Secretary of Housing and Economic Development pursuant to subsection D." That's basically if you can't conduct these. That's basically if you can't conduct these Zoom hearings, and conduct of hearings is very difficult to process, then, you know, DHCD will likely give you an extension of time, you know, to conduct your hearing. But what is critically important is that language regarding constructive approvals, approved or denied constructively or otherwise. That's the critical language. What does that mean, constructive decisions? Means that any petition before the board is deemed approved because of the failure of the board, this board to issue a decision or determination within the statutorily prescribed period, as it may be extended by written agreement between the applicant and the board, or as otherwise has been extended or told by Governor Baker's November 12th COVID order, tolling that period to December 1, 2020. So what's an example of a constructive decision by the board? That would include the timeline by which the board must open its hearing. That's not an issue here, since you already did so on October 5th, 2020, even though technically you could have waited till December 1st. Although, at the time you opened the hearing, the COVID order from April had already lapsed. So there was some question as to when the actual 180-day period, you know, actually began. But that leads to the second example. When does the 180-day period begin? That is the time from which you open the hearing to the time you must terminate the hearing. Well, the COVID order left no question about that. That period began on December 1st. That means that the board and we collectively have had an extra two months to work out the things we worked out, like peer review and that type of thing. And a very important date to note is your termination date. You must terminate public comment and close your hearing by June 1st, 2020, under the current circumstances, unless we mutually agree otherwise. What the COVID order doesn't impact are procedural timelines. Most notably, it is clear from Governor Baker's order that there is no change to the time in which this board must have acted asserting any safe harbor, because any stay only impacts constructive decisions triggered by lapses of time, which we already talked about. Assertion of a safe harbor is not a constructive decision for the reasons I already mentioned. This point is not only clear by the plain English read of the governor's order, but taken together by the amended emergency regulation of 760 CMR 56.038A, which went into effect on August 6, 2020, when arguably the COVID order had already lapsed. That states in relevant part, and I'm going to read this, because it's important, and I have abridged it a little bit, to take out the things that aren't really important to this conversation. And this comes from the redlined version of the new August 6, 760 CMR regulation. If a board considers that in connection with an application, a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs on the grounds set forth in 760 CMR 5603-1, that's your safe harbor provision, have been met, it must do so according to the following procedures. Within 15 days of the opening of the local hearing for the comprehensive permit, the board shall provide written notice to the applicant with a copy to the department that it considers that a denial of the permit or the imposition of conditions or requirements would be consistent with local needs, the grounds that it believes have been met, and the factual basis for that position, including any necessary supportive documentation. And this is what got added in the emergency regulation amendment. And it's very important, because they added this, they amended this, to only say this. All written notices, including copies and supporting documentation, must be submitted electronically pursuant to guidance by the department during the COVID-19 state of emergency to ensure timely receipt. This is the most important part of this provision, to ensure timely receipt by the deadlines herein. If the governor and through DHCD intended that safe harbor to be extended beyond the 15 days, they would have said so. They didn't. All they did was tell you, "You can't file your safe harbor the way you used to be able to file it, because no one's at DHCD to receive it. You've got to do it by a permitting portal." And they have a whole guidance about that. So these emergency changes to the comprehensive permit operating regulations are in direct response to the COVID pandemic and were promulgated through Governor Baker's office by his Department of Housing and Community Development. Governor Baker, who issued the same COVID order extending out the constructive decision deadline, only the constructive decision deadline. Related to this, and this is my second, my third actually, point. The board did in fact open its hearing on October 5th, 2020. That came up as a question, and the reason why I'm answering it is because I think it's important that anybody on the board erase all doubt whether or not they opened their hearing. There is no evidence to suggest otherwise. Notice of the public hearing was properly given under General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11. Notice to all parties and interest publication and posting all conducted properly. The hearing was properly called to order on October 5th, 2020. By reading of the notice and the manner in which the hearing will be conducted, the board properly announced that the applicant's technical presentation would be given on that date with other housekeeping-type administrative issues to be addressed, and importantly, with the opportunity for public comment to be given at the continued hearing on November 9th, 2020. To be clear, at no point did the board through its chair terminate the right of the public to provide comment. And the hearing was not terminated on October 5th, 2020, but continued. The right of the public was simply deferred to another day to weigh in. The method in which the board conducted its hearing is quite common in these circumstances, especially when all parties are aware there will be continuances. There is no requirement at law or by regulation requiring public comment at each and every continued hearing, so long as the hearing is not terminated, and it was not. The manner of conduct of the public hearing is compliant with 40A, Section 11, and is at the discretion of the board and the chair. My fourth and final point. An issue, again, I felt this was important to address. An issue arose regarding density with suggestion by a board member that horse trading density begin at the outset, basically at the second hearing. To be clear, the application before the board is for 133 ownership units. By its project eligibility letter of April 30th, 2020, which is all in your application packet, you have it. Mass Housing deemed the site at 15 King Street eligible for the proposed development after review of the application to it with supporting materials, all of which were incorporated into the application currently before the board. 760 CMR 56.07H regarding evidence, should this, God forbid, go before the Housing Appeals Committee, and they have to review all of this. By appeal of the applicant states in relevant part that the following matter shall be within the sole province of the subsidizing agency, Mass Housing, is your subsidizing agency in the context of this application. And the committee, the Housing Appeals Committee, will not hear evidence concerning matters relating to project eligibility. They already deemed the site eligible for 133 units. This is not within the scope of the hearing before us at the onset. I'm not saying it can't come up later. It just shouldn't come up now. In other words, density considerations, as I indicated, are not within the scope of the board's hearing at the start. Such considerations are reserved for the very end, the conclusion of the hearing, after the development, proposed development is vetted and discussed and has gone through the entire peer review process, where we understand entirely the technical issues that need to be addressed. It is a last resort consideration of the board after it exhausts all other applicant proposals addressing issues of local concern. That is your charge, to address issues of local concern, those which present an egregious health or safety concern, those intended to promote better site and better building design, protection of natural environment and other issues. You won't know how to address those things until we've had a full discussion and vetting of the application and the technical aspects of the application before you. So to suggest horse trading density at the second hearing is putting the cart ahead of the proverbial horse. So 760 CMR states, I'm sorry, 760 CMR 5607-1C states in relevant part, it's related, that the scope of the Housing Appeals Committee hearing with regard to approval of conditions in the case of the approval of a comprehensive permit with conditions or requirements imposed, issues to be addressed shall be, first, whether the conditions and/or requirements considered in aggregate make the building or operation of the project uneconomic. You can't have an uneconomic discussion until you've reached the end. And second, if so, whether such conditions and/or requirements are consistent with local needs. Again, you can't have these discussions until you fully vet this. We are in the third hearing, and we haven't even started talking about the issues.
Okay.
I've concluded, but I think going back to the safe harbor, I really encourage the board to think twice about this. I think it's important also to realize the only thing asserting a safe harbor does, it does not necessarily stop action, although at the discretion of the board and the chair, it may. What it does is it tolls that 180 days. So let's say the whole process runs through 45 days. The 15, 15, and 30. Actually, that's 60 days. Let's say it runs through 60 days. At best, you get an extra 60 days at the end of the 180-day period. You stop the clock for the period of time in which you've asserted the safe harbor. That assumes that I'm not going to respond quicker than 15 days, and that also assumes that DHCD is not going to respond quicker than 30 days. Those are only procedural timelines. They'll run up against the end of them, but likely they will complete their review earlier on. And as I believe the mayor indicated, it's not a hearing. It's an informal review, and the DHCD will render its decision in writing. But from what I see, asserting the applicable provision with regard to recent progress, you don't have it. You've got, by my count, 284 tannery units plus the 60 sonic units gives you...
344.
308. 284 plus 60?
344.
344. Well, you're still under the 443.
Okay.
Obviously, it has to be done in writing with supporting evidence. So I would hope that the board would consider this and not move forward with a safe harbor. I mean no disrespect to the mayor. I understand his position on this. But I think it's important to look at the plain English meaning of the law before you and the regulations that you are supposed to uphold, which are meant to guide your hearing. So if you have any questions, I'm ready to present traffic. Unless, are you going to take a vote on this?
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Whoa. So we've heard from board members, we've heard from Attorney Panos, we've heard from the mayor. Mayor Bettencourt, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
Yes, and I will be extremely brief. There was a lot of information provided right there by Attorney Panos, very eloquently, as he always does. But I do think there is a great deal that is up in the air, and there's a great deal of gray area. That's how lawyers make their money. To me, there's never any plain reading, because there's always lawyers on different sides that have a different interpretation of that reading. I wish things a lot of ways were more clear, but they're not. I think there's a lot of gray area here. We're in a state of emergency. It's hard to really delve into the mind of what the governor had for each individual scenario that a city is faced with. He's right that it doesn't, in terms of emergency changes because of the COVID pandemic, it doesn't include specifically safe harbor requests. But it doesn't exclude safe harbor requests. So to me, we have the ability to move forward and have the discussion. We can make our argument. Attorney Panos is going to have his argument, and he may well prevail. But I do think this is an argument that can be made. I think we have a lot of backup information. And I'm actually even more so optimistic about our significant progress argument, because I talked about 9.3% was our number in January of '20. Our number has gone up to 9.5% because the good work of Kurt Bellavance and his staff has added numbers to us. That's .2. I have us potentially being as from 8.1 to 10. That additional .2 would bring us over 2%. But those are things that have to be determined by an impartial jury or review panel. But I think we do have some compelling arguments. At the end of the day, Attorney Panos may be right, but I think we have some good arguments to be made. And I wanted to move forward with them and ask respectfully for the ZBA to approve the safe harbor request at this time.
Okay, then. Well, we have received, you're right, quite a lot of information. I'm sure that we all have, you know, our own opinions. I'm going to give everyone a couple of minutes just to take a deep breath, think about what we want to do, and then the matter is before the board. Somebody does have to make the motion. Somebody has to second it, and we will take a roll call vote.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Are we allowed to, you know, take a recess and huddle up and do our own Zoom among the zoning board panel?
I'm sure we can. Do we know how to do that? I don't... Oh, Kurt says no.
Okay, because if we had been doing this, conducting a live hearing, we would be doing that right now, so.
So we can't do that, Kurt? There's no... Kurt?
Yeah, you're a public board, so as long as you have three members, you're a quorum, and you'd have to post that meeting and act in public.
There are only, I believe, only certain reasons to go into executive session. Your attorney on that.
All right, this isn't one of them.
Well, through the chair, if I may.
Go ahead.
Nothing prohibits us from deliberating, at least on the record. So I'll just put out there some of my thoughts on this, and I'm torn. I'm torn, um, on what we do here. Uh, there's the one argument that you have that says, what harm is there by asking for it to see if it's granted? If it is granted, then we've reached substantial and the question is what happens to the other forty Bs in my mind? What happens to Farm Ave? I know Oak Street's been hanging around for a long time, but what happens to them? Um, you know, the Farm Ave one was, was called a friendly and do, if we invoke safe harbor now, which does not include Farm Ave, have we potentially shot ourselves in the foot? Um, it's a concern of mine. Yeah, the question is, are we, is all we're doing delaying the inevitable? If we don't meet the legal requirements and, uh, I mean, I have no choice but to look at the letter of the law and the letter of the law says what it says. And, uh, I mean, we can make arguments. I'm just, are we just delaying the inevitable by twenty, thirty, forty days and just pushing this thing out when we could be actively pursuing it and deliberating it and discussing it? Um, so I guess my, those are my only concerns, what, uh, what kind of position we're putting ourselves in and what do we, what do we gain from trying to move this forward based upon what we've heard tonight? Uh, I'm, I'm torn. I don't, I don't have an answer yet as to what I want to do. I just want to throw that out there.
Through the chair.
Yep.
Deliberate, um, Stephen, my, my reading of the, of, of the C M R is, is that this is a specific applicant, application-specific request. It's in connection with this application, this application only. And I think it is also in our, i- if we were to make such a request, we're taking into consideration also the pending, uh, forty B uh, projects that are out there that haven't, you know, um, that, that haven't necessarily been voted on yet. Um, but, but we're, you know, we're anticipating they're, you know, they're, they're, they're being counted as, as, and I think that's, that's part of probably why we would be pursuing, uh, this avenue. So again, I, I, I have to imagine that our legal has weighed in, um, with Mayor Bettencourt's, you know, presentation tonight. Um, it would be, it would be nice to have, you know, the legal on, on the Zoom, you know, to deliberate with us and, and let us know, you know, his interpretation or, or their interpretation. Um, but I, like I, like I said, I have to imagine that legal has weighed in and, and that's why we've heard what we've heard from Mr. Mayor. Um, and, and that's sort of where I sit at this point is, I'm not really sure I, I see the harm. Um, it would, it would, uh, the procedure itself, um, necessarily tolls the one hundred and eighty-day termination requirement. Um, so that's going to happen. Um, whether or not it's thirty to sixty days from now, I guess is the question, as Attorney Panos pointed out, in, in terms of when, when we make the request between now and the fifteenth, if we were to do that. When, within the fifteen days, he would, he would, um, challenge that and, and then when in the month of January, um, the department would, would get back to us and let us know. Um, so basically, we're looking at a, you know, a month, a month and a half down the road, one way or the other. But I think that the, um, the outcome i- is, is, you know, Attorney Panos mentioned that it's not a constructive decision of the Z B A to assert safe harbor. I don't know that it isn't, um, considered a constructive decision, um, by, by our board. It seems to be a pretty important decision and I, I, I do know that important and constructive don't have the same meaning. But I'm also not sure that this is, um, I haven't seen a precedent for it one way or the other. I think the mayor made a good point when he said that it's certainly not excluded, may not be included, but it's not excluded in the governor's COVID order, so. Um, I don't know. I, I think it's a tough one as well. Um, but, but I do, um, I do think I'm leaning towards supporting, uh, the mayor's request uh, to, uh, to assert a, or to make the motion, uh, to, to assert the safe harbor.
Okay, so let's put this in real simple terms. If we make a motion, or if you make a motion to approve, then the steps are, I have to electronically send a letter requesting safe harbor. And I also have to send a copy of that to Attorney Panos. Then, let's just say, within three days, it's denied. Then, it's done. It's, it's done and we just move forward. Correct?
Yes, uh, however, Attorney Panos is going to have fifteen days to, to, to tell the department why we shouldn't be able to get that. So, and then they're going to take up to thirty days to review all the materials. So three days, I don't think is, you know, we've got to the fifteenth. So if we want, we think we do anyways. So if we wanted to, we could make this request in good faith on December fifteenth or fourteenth. Um, and I, I have to imagine ten days before Christmas, there's a good chance Attorney Panos doesn't challenge it until afterwards. I mean, if we're just talking reasonable timeframe here. And then the department probably doesn't get around to looking at it until sometime in January. When the department gets back to us, if they get back to us and they say, no, you don't qualify, then the clock starts running again. And the, right now, it's June first. However long it takes to, to come to this decision is how much longer you add to June first, I believe. That's correct.
Through the chair, if I could?
Yes.
Um, just, just to, the way I'm leaning towards and, and, and believe me, I'm, I think, there's probably a couple people on this board that aren't lawyers, so, and I'm one of them. So I probably look at it a little bit different than, than the other members of the board to say that, Mr. Attorney Panos made a great presentation. However, I'm sorry I objected, but I didn't think it was a debate. It wa- it was not to sway the board. The ma- the mayor made a request and the mayor, and he made some great things, but in his presentation, one thing that struck me was hush trading for density. And we really shouldn't be doing that now. Well, there's going to come a time when we're going to hush trade for something. And the decision as to this safe harbor, I want to hear what comes back from Mass Housing because there's a good chance that we might approve this with conditions that they take exception to. And if that's the case, how is Mass, Mass Housing going to look at that when they have to make a decision? Do they take into consideration our request for safe harbor and realize that the city has done all these things and that our hush trading for density isn't so unreasonable as Attorney Panos says it is? Because I'll tell you, when I look at this book and I take it, you know, we got it a long time ago, nineteen ninety-nine, Guidelines for Local Review of Comprehensive Permits. I still have it. We're negotiators. We have an opportunity. It's a mechanism which permits for a community to shape housing development to meet its needs. It doesn't say if Mass Housing says one hundred and thirty-three units, then we can't say anything other than one hundred and thirty-three units. Doesn't say that at all. Here's our guidelines. What he wants to tell you it says, that's his job. Absolutely. That he gets paid to do. But we all get these guidelines. We're negotiators. We shape this project, not the developer. We shape it with him, not for him. We take into consideration our community and the neighborhood in which this project is being built. Am I hush trading for density? You bet your life. Five-story buildings in that neighborhood. Come on. Come on, when are we going to start discussing this stuff? Traffic's going to be great. Fight Department's going to be great. But when do we start looking at this stuff? When does this apply to them and not just us? When do they have to become negotiators? When do they want to shape our community? When everything is all said and done? And before we exhaust anything we have to do legally? This is, this is going on too long. We're talking about traffic for the third meeting. Oh, that's good. How are they going to guarantee that you're going to keep this traffic off the streets? They're not, because you can park on the streets unless there's a snowbank. Do we condition that? Now, I know, I understand, and I'm going to get off of the, the high horse right now. But we've got to exercise every opportunity. If you think as it's presented that this project is, is a great project, then we should listen to Attorney Panos and we should just vote on it right now. But we don't. City, who, the mayor, wants to take another look at this thing. We've got to take another look at this thing. We can't take the word of the attorney. He's a great guy, a wonderful person. We've do, we've relied on him for a lot of information. But do you really think he's going to tell us thing that's going to go against this project? No. Can't depend on him. Going to depend on what we think is right. Legally, not legally? I'm not a lawyer. I'm looking at it a lot different than some of the lawyers in this board. But that's what makes it a great board. We get all sides. So with that being said, I'm going to, I'm going to approve. I'm going to support it because I think it's just one of those things we have an opportunity to look at. We get a little bit of an opinion from Mass Housing as to what they think of our effort. They're going to have to respond to our request. And there might be good information in that request that brings us forward as we go forward with this project. Project's not dead. Just because we do this doesn't mean we, we're going to say denial. I don't know if there's anybody that don't think that no one wants what's up there now. I can tell you that. I'm looking at a building right across the street. I could probably see it from here, the Al Fine building. I don't want that up there. It's not fair to the neighborhoods to have what's up there now. It's up to us to give them something that's going to be good for them, developer and good for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Can I just briefly address a little bit of that?
Briefly.
All right. Um, I didn't say that there wasn't a time to talk about density. And I made that clear. I said that now is not the time. The other, uh, issue I would put forward is, while I am here to represent my client's interests, and there's no question about that, my reputation goes with that. And I am not here to mislead this board or tell you what through my twenty years of experience in this practice area uh, is the likely result in situations like this. Um, with regard to those nineteen ninety-nine guidelines, they're invalid. The regulations changed in two thousand and eight, new guidelines took their place. Um, with regard to horse trading for density at this point, I, 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 I indicated to you before and I'll indicate it again, according to seven sixty C M R, uh, fifty-six point oh five eight D, where we talk about uneconomic conditions. Number two, to reduce the number of units for reasons other than evidence of local concern within the purview of the board. It's clear. This is not the time to talk about density because we are in the third hearing where we haven't, and I take exception. We haven't talked about traffic. We gave a very general overview of the entire project on October fifth. Tonight, we're supposed to talk about in-depth traffic. And your peer reviewer, um, from World Tech, Mr. Emery, is going to take the information tonight and take, compile the information from the application and he's going to give his peer review assessment and we're going to talk about it. And that's where a lot of the negotiation takes place. And very briefly, I said I was going to be brief and I will, but I think this is important in the context of where we are right now, that through traffic and through, um, the site design and engineering discussions which will take place and all of the other discussions that will unfold as peer review unfolds, then the board and the applicant begin to build a pyramid. The building blocks are established by this foundation. And at that point, when we reach the top or near the top of the, the pyramid, you know, I'm as big a fan of peer review as anyone because there are things sometimes that peer review reveals that I hadn't thought about. And if it helps make the development better, then we're going to talk about it. And that's where the negotiation, the building blocks of negotiation start. Not now, now's not, we don't, you guys, with all due respect, don't know a lot about this project. Because your peer reviewers that the city has hired or is in the process of hiring have not reviewed and give you, given you technical comment on this. I know it inside and out. I know it inside and out because I've been living it since, you know, since, gosh, I've been living it for eighteen months as we've been building this application. So I, I am a little ahead of the game, but do I know the technical aspects of this? Do I know what my, uh, civil engineer has done with regard to topography and why we did stormwater the way we did and what the traffic impacts are? Do I know that level of detail? No, that's why I have professionals. And we have the best in the business on this team. I, I, I really tell you that in all earnestness. We're not trying to pull a fast one. We're not trying to ram something down your throat. We have six months to do, go through a deliberative process. In any event, I've said enough, but I, I really did take exception that we're going to cut off discussion and hold a vote tonight. Uh, and we're going to start talking about density tonight. You know, with all due respect, now's not the time.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to make this very short and Jason, if you felt that anyway that I construed that I questioned your integrity or your, your.
I did not.
Please accept my apology. That's not, that wasn't my intention and let's go forward. Thank you.
Okay. Terrific. So right now, before we hear traffic and before we go any further, we need to have a motion, uh, if in fact, we are going to go forward with safe harbor according to Mayor Bettencourt's, um, request.
I'll make a motion to invoke, uh, safe harbor.
Second.
Second it.
Roll call vote. Dan.
Yes.
Barry.
Yes.
Julie. Julie.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Yes.
Fran.
No, not Fran. Did you do Barry?
I did. Dan, Barry, Julie, Stephen, Fran.
Oh, I'm last?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't say anything yet, Carla.
I'm sorry, Stephen.
That's okay. Um, reluctantly, yes.
Fran? Present. The motion passes. Safe Harbor will be invoked. Um, Mayor Bettencourt, are you there?
Yes, I just want to thank you, thank the members, um, and Ms. Calucci, I'll, I'll check in with you in terms of, um, putting that information together. But I really appreciate this. This is a, a step I think is worth making and an argument worth pursuing. So thank you very much for the support.
Okay, thank you. Now to go on to the business at hand, we have a traffic presentation.
Pardon me, I'm going to do a, uh, chair screen and put up the, uh, Vanessa Associates, uh, traffic, um, traffic, uh, presentation. Okay. Can you all see that?
Yep.
I'm going to expand the screen. There we go.
Perfect. Thanks, Jason.
Is that good? All right, Scott, you're on.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name's Scott Thornton. I'm with Vanessa Associates. We prepared the transportation impact assessment for the project. This is going to be a little more in-depth than the presentation that we gave in October, which was intended as more of an overview. But, but we have a few slides go over some of the issues that, that have been discussed as well as providing a summary of the traffic study that was prepared and dated December 2015. I'm sorry, 2019. The next slide shows the site location and the study area, the intersections that we analyzed for the project. And starting, I guess, with the intersection of Ellsworth Road with King Street. Then, which is a signalized intersection, moving down King Street to the Lowell Street, Endicott Street intersection. And then we had two intersections of, or the two ends of Southwick Road. And then also the intersection of Ellsworth with Emerson Street and Emerson Street with Lowell Street. And these locations were selected as, these are the main intersection we expect project traffic to travel through. We're not expecting any of our traffic to use Southwick Road. It's a, it's basically a private street. It's a one-way road. Headed out towards Lowell Street. We, our project doesn't have any access to Southwick Road. So we don't anticipate our project traffic using those intersections with the exception of traveling through the intersections on either Ellsworth or on Lowell Street. The next slide shows the project site plan in a little more detail. And as you can see, the access is through two curb cuts out onto King Street, which is located at the bottom of the screen. Ellsworth Road is off to the left. Southwick Road is off to the top. And you can see there's no vehicular access that's, that's proposed to Southwick Road with the project. So no vehicular connections to Southwick Road. 133 dwelling units with 213 parking spaces. I'll get into parking in a little more detail further, further on. The next slide shows, sort of summarizes our traffic data collection program. The data was collected in March 2018 and then updated in November of 2019. And those represent pre-COVID conditions. And they're more representative of typical traffic conditions. Any traffic studies being done now are being corrected to pre-COVID conditions. So because conditions have, have changed so dramatically with people staying home or with, with economic activity being curtailed. A lot of the traffic studies that are being done are taking counts that are being done now and correcting them back to, to conditions from 2018, 2019. This study is already at that state. It's already a pre-COVID condition. So it's acceptable to base conclusions on, on this traffic data. We collected traffic counts during the weekday morning and weekday evening time periods. So that's seven to nine and four to six at those six intersections that were identified earlier. These are the critical time periods for, for the residential areas and for most traffic in, in this specific area. King Street and Ellsworth Street intersection was counted from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM to obtain the afternoon school traffic peak. In general, the peak hours occurred between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning and between 4:30 and 5:30 in the evening. And you know, this approach is consistent with standard practice as identified by IT and Mass DOT. Looking at these, these type, these time periods that are, that represent the peak activity for both the residential development and the adjacent street traffic. The next slide shows some, a summary of the, the site distance measurements we, we performed. We had done some speed measurements, identifying the travel speeds out on King Street where the driveways are proposed to be located. And although we, we didn't measure speeds that were I should say the 85th percentile speed that we measured out there was actually below 30, 35 miles per hour. We just rounded up to provide a conservative condition. So, so based on the speeds that we observed that using design guidelines gives you an estimate of the proper and appropriate site distance you need for traffic that's exiting and approaching the driveways. And at both the east driveway and the west driveway, we needed about 250 feet of site distance. And we observed between 400 and 500 feet of site distance. So we have sufficient site distance to, to provide safe travel through the site driveways and on King Street. The next, the next slide shows sort of a summary of the crash data that we, we looked at. We did a review of crash statistics for the six intersections. Five of those locations are below state averages. The Lowell Street and King Street and Endicott Street is above the state average. And we had identified that in the traffic study. We had also identified the, the, the measure to conduct a road safety audit, which is a detailed review of crash data, crash statistics and types of crashes that have occurred at the intersection to identify possible causes for the high crash rate at that intersection. You know, there's a, there's a number of there's a number of conclusions that could be drawn just from an overview of the crash data. But the, but the road safety audit is really intended to drill down on the details of the crash data. Come up with a data-driven series of improvements and measures that, that can be implemented there. Both for, for a short-term, medium-term and a long-term basis. And it's really the first step to identify possible improvements to address the crash rate. And that's something that, that the project applicant is proposing as mitigation for the project. The next slide goes into the project trip generation summary. And while, while that's coming up, you know, the, the, the data that we use to generate the project trips is from the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And the ITE trip rates are really the primary source for travel demand analysis of new developments in the United States. And ITE is the required trip source for most cities and towns in the Commonwealth and required by Mass DOT for projects that are under their review. So these trip rates provide an accurate basis to, to project conclusions regarding the project impacts. And again, looking at the, at the daily, the weekday morning and the weekday evening time periods. You can see that, that particularly in the morning and the evening. It's a, it's really a minimal level of less than one vehicle permitted during the peak hours. The morning peak hour, you're looking at a total of 48 trips, so 12 entering, 36 exiting. And the evening time period, you're looking at a total of 36 trips entering and 23 trips exiting for a total of 59 vehicle trips. Most of that project traffic would be expected to travel out to Lowell Street. About, we, we expected that traffic to be split approximately half, but 35% headed out towards 128 and 38% headed down towards, towards downtown. The next slide, sort of touch on some of the previous uses at the site. JB Thomas North Shore Hospital was, was, was a previous, previous occupant. And, and also the, I think the Cura Health Boston North Shore for a very small time, for a short time. Was a, was a long-term care facility. But you know, the site, so the site was recently vacated, you know, through, since 2017. But prior to that, it was an active site and was generating some level of, of traffic. The next slide actually shows a comparison of the, of the trip generation. You know, for the three, for the same three time periods that we're looking at, for the daily, the weekday morning, the weekday evening peak hour. And you can see the, the, the gray, the gray bar represents the project. The orange bar represents the 86-bed hospital. And the brownish bar represents the 50-bed long-term care facility. And you can see that the, the, the hospital generated about two to three times more traffic than the residential project would generate during any of the time periods. Whereas the Cura Health Long-Term Care Facility generated about half as much traffic as what our, the residential project is expected to generate. But you know, this, the intent of this slide is just to show that the site was generating some level of traffic activity. The next slide, we get into a little bit on trip distribution. And again, this is, this is where the, the, the distribution goes with Lowell Street, about 73%. Endicott Street off to the, to the, to the north. About 10% and the Ellsworth, Ellsworth would have carried about 15%. So again, the majority of the project trips are destined towards Route 128 or downtown. The next slide shows sort of a summary of the traffic volume increases. We're expecting during the, the peak hours headed to the west on Lowell Street, about 16 trips in the morning peak hour. And about 21 trips in the evening peak hour. On Lowell Street headed to the east, headed down towards, towards downtown, you got about 19 trips during the morning peak hour. 23 trips during the evening peak hour. On Endicott Street, about five trips in the morning and six trips in the evening. So this is equivalent to one vehicle every three minutes or less during these, or on these roadways during these time periods. The next slide shows sort of a summary of the, of parking conditions. And what we have is the, is the parking supply ratio and spaces per unit. And then the average parking utilization ratio, also in space per unit. So in terms of PBD zoning, we're technically required to have two spaces per unit. Using the ITE Parking Generation Manual, fifth edition, which is the latest, latest edition of this publication. It has information for this type of multifamily development based on counts of, of actual facilities. So the, so the typical parking supply ratio is about 1.2 spaces per unit. And the average parking utilization ratio, or how many spaces are, are typically used on average is about 0.9 spaces per unit. So this is, this is based on, this is based on suburban, urban suburban sites. In addition, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission did a study last year called the Perfect Fit Parking Study, which went out and looked at a number of sites in the metro Boston area. They found that the, the typical parking supply ratio was one space per unit. And the average parking utilization ratio, or how many spaces were actually being used, was about 0.73 spaces per unit. And our project is providing a ratio of 1.6 spaces per unit, which we think is adequate to accommodate the project demand. The next slide shows a little more detail in relation to that, that MAPC study. So they went out and they looked at 189 sites with a total of 19,439 parking spaces. They found that 5,910 spaces were empty at night, indicating 30% of parking was unutilized. And these are, a lot of these site, a lot of these sites are, are near major highways where you would expect parking to be, you would expect the residents to have one or two vehicles because they're near highways and they would, they would be focused on highway access. But that's not the case. They, the study found that, that 30% of parking was unutilized at all of these developments. And you know, just a note about MAPC, that is the Regional Planning Council serving 101 cities and towns of Metro Boston. It's a public agency. It's not a, this isn't a, a, a development arm. This is, this is a, a planning council representing a number of towns in the Commonwealth. In addition, we've also, the AI has also done studies of other suburban sites in Massachusetts indicating parking demand, the same utilization ratios of 1.2 to 1.4 spaces per unit. And those sites were, were very suburban. And you know, with similar environment, not, not located near transit or near a high-capacity transit line. But still with a lower parking demand ratio than what is being proposed at this site. And, and the utilization ratios at urban sites are likely lower, which would be consistent with the MAPC study that indicated average demand of, of 0.73 spaces per unit. So it just goes to, to reinforce the fact that area multifamily developments use less parking than what's provided. So in terms of recommendations, again, you, you've seen this, this slide before. We have two full-service driveways out onto King Street. We're going to maintain the sightlines that we measured out there. We're not going to have access to Southwick Road. We do propose a travel demand management program where we'll, we will post transit schedules and promote car pooling. We'll have information on car sharing services to promote the type of sustainable non-automobile travel that helps to reduce the traffic flow in the area. We're also going to provide some bicycle racks on site. At the Lowell Street, King Street, Endicott Street intersection, we're going to conduct that road safety audit. We're also looking at some changes at the, at the Ellsworth Road, Emerson Street and Emerson Street Extension intersection. There's no stop signs out there. So we propose to add those on Emerson Street. And you know, in terms of, of the conclusion, we feel that, that the project traffic can be safely accommodated. You know, I, I, I understood the, the comments from Mr. Osborne. And you know, there's, there's no hiding that this project is going to add traffic to the area intersections. We feel that we can, we can mitigate our impact. We feel that by looking at and conducting the road safety audit at the Lowell Street, King Street intersection, that's going to help to improve traffic flow in the area and come up with some real conclusions or some real improvement measures for that intersection. And all the other, you know, as, as Attorney Panos mentioned, you know, we, we, we look, we look forward to peer review. We, we, we feel that we can get a lot out of peer review. We've worked with, with World Tech before. We look forward to working with, with a city engineer, Will Paulitz and, and, and getting his comments as well as World Tech's comments and continuing to, to work forward to address traffic and parking for this project. So that's the traffic and parking presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to. So that's the traffic and parking uh presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to do what Mr. Hensel.
Thank you. Uh, can we unshare?
Uh, yes. Stop share. All right.
Um, I just want to, if I may, and it is this um, this um this could be in everybody's mind on the board uh before we talk about traffic. Um, some of you, or maybe all of you, um maybe are wondering why we continued on this evening because we um are going to send that letter to Safe Harbor. Um, and the answer to that is that the clock doesn't stop on this project until the letter is sent and no letter has been sent yet. So um, no reason why we shouldn't just move on this evening, listen to the traffic, um ask our questions and um let the chips fall where they may. So uh, that was a great presentation. Do I have any comments or questions from the board?
Through the chair? Just through you to the to um, the travel um demand management. Um, in reality, how long does that actually last and who's responsible for that once the development is done? And everybody's moved in and and the developer goes away, you know, it it has some great information or like, but transit schedules and who who makes sure that the updates are posted? And how do you, who who updates all the tran- you know, the the um the the non, the car sharing issues and initiatives? And you know, it sounds real good, but it sounds like one of those things that we're going to put up the signs when the building's brand new and then, oh, well. So have you talked to the MBTA to 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 talk about existing public transportation bus routes? Probably not a good time to talk about that with the T-cut and everything, but but you know, have we gone as far as saying, all right, what is your association with the MBTA to look at the existing bus routes that are in the city of PBD? And maybe modify some of those bus routes to bring actual public transportation to your project?
Yeah, and it it's a great question. And I know that the the MBTA is looking at um optimizing the routes that they have uh to to sort of minimize the use of routes that aren't getting a lot of um, a lot of ridership in favor of routes that are getting more ridership and trying to expand those. Uh, and and truth be told, this this development, um, you know, there if if it was a, if it was a, if it was a uh a much larger development, then there there may be a a chance of the of the MBTA modifying some of the bus routes to send more more of them directly past the site. Uh, but it, and it is something that we can work with, you know, we'll we'll set up something with with Attorney Panos for moving forward to make sure that the that those schedules get updated, that uh, you know, the latest information is posted on site. Maybe that's through a management company, maybe that's through a operations company. It it's, you know, those those details get worked out as the projects get closer to occupancy.
Madam Chair, if I could also address uh that question, that was a great question, Barry. And again, it's one of these things that uh when you get caught up in all the detail of a of a proposal like this, uh, you you want to make sure it's at the forefront. I will say that Appendix D in your application materials is an amenities plan. And it shows um, and it shows existing bus routes near the site. Um, and I know that there are a number of them that serve a Central Street. And one thing I might ask Kurt Bellevance through the chair is as Central Street Rehabilitation Project unfolds, what the impact to those bus routes might be? And he probably doesn't have an answer tonight, but if we could at least keep it in the back of our uh head as uh World Tech begins to look and and assess the peer review. Uh, but that's, that's a great question. I mean, if we can get some more public transport, at least near the site, uh, gosh, that's a win-win for everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, Kurt, did you want to say anything? Because we can't hear you.
How about now?
Okay, no.
Um, well, certainly the T would have um plans for temporary um changes in bu- bus routes uh when it comes to um to when they're doing the construction. Um, but right now, the bus does go down Central Street. Um, I don't, there's any plans right now to change that. Um, they are looking at reducing uh bus lines as um, as uh Board Member Osborne had mentioned. Um, so that's another issue. But um, right now, I don't think they would change anything based on on this project. Um, but going forward, there there could be changes in the future just based on COVID and how that's been responding and how people use the the public transportation today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paulitz, would you like to speak?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, my name is William Paulitz, City Engineer with the uh PB Civil Public Services Department. Um, just wanted to go over a very uh quick timeframe with the the zoning board members so they know where we stand. Uh, we said, um, at the request of uh the ZBA and the applicant, we've put together a peer review team. Tonight, we have World Tech, but this this evening, we have Rod Emery and Rich Benavento. I believe Rod will be doing the presentation for World Tech. But I wanted to let you know, we're just actually at the beginning stages of this peer review. Um, in early November, we had sent the applicant's team uh the peer review proposals and um agreement. And based upon some discussion with um myself, Kurt Ezra and the applicant's team, we decided to add some additional uh time into these proposals uh so that we wouldn't try to have to put it on the back end. So with that being said, there was a little bit of delay getting started. Uh, we sent back a revised proposal to their team back in mid-November. We received uh mid to late November, the signed proposal, the signed agreement back. Uh, and then last week, we actually received the check. So World Tech has actually just started taking a review at it late last week. So I know uh Rod obviously has has a small amount of time to look at it. He's obviously been online, so he's heard the presentation. So I just wanted to let the members know that uh this is just the beginning of our review. Um, with that being said, I just wanted to touch base on uh two quick things before I hand over um the mic to Rod. And that is, I guess my question would be for the road safety audit, the applicant is proposing, what the timeframe for the road safety audit would be for the intersections of Lowell and King Street? Because the road safety audit is going, is going to produce um a list of deficiencies for that intersection. So my question is, is what is the applicant's proposal to fixing some of these deficiencies that come to light? Because at that point, these public carren will be closed out most likely. So is the applicant proposing just to do a road safety audit and then hand over the deficiency list to the city? Or is the applicant proposing to take a look at some of these deficiencies and try to um do mitigation through this this list that's created? So I'll ask that question. And the only other thing I would add before I hand this to-
You're muted, Will.
All right. Fran, I'm sorry. Hopefully it was, I muted the whole time. So I don't know when I became muted.
You said the only other thing and then you muted yourself.
Oh, okay. Uh, that's because I was about to leave the screen to actually read something. So the perfect fit. Uh, so I took a quick look at the perfect fit, so hopefully I don't mute while I bring up their website. Just wanted to say that um, the municipalities that they looked at overnight, where they had the, uh, I think it was thirty percent. I heard that some of the parking wasn't being utilized. I'm just not sure if these municipalities compare with PBD. I'll just quickly read them to you. Arlington, Boston, Cambridge, Chelsea, Everett, Malden, Medford, Melrose, Newton, Quincy, Revere, Somerville, Waltham, and Watertown. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to light. Uh, I'm not that familiar with the perfect fit uh of them, what I heard tonight and what I uh quickly was able to do a little bit of research, uh while Mr. Uh, while Scott was uh talking. So with that being said, I will um hand it over to Rod Emery from uh World Tech.
Well, they probably go unused because most of those people have already moved to PBD.
Hello.
Well, and just to add to that, the the North Shore Task Force worked with MAPC to do a subsection, which they did do. I think they they did PBD, Salem, and Beverly. So either our folks at World Tech or um the uh King Street people can take a look at that. So maybe that's more information that we can get to the board.
Hello. Am I getting through?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, uh, I've I've lost the connection a couple of times in the last couple of minutes. Um, I have had a chance to start the review. I'm about halfway through it and made some notes for tonight. Um, I think Scott hit on a lot of the issues that are important. Um, probably the number one issue is the parking and the parking ratios. And I think um, you know, we'll take a look at those numbers. Um, we use some of the same, we use the same references and um, there is an IT reference on multifamily houses that has a different ratio. It's about one point seven. But one thing I would point out, it seems like there's a large number of compact spaces as part of that mix. And I'm not sure that that makes sense for the traffic we have today, to have sixty-six percent or so compact spaces, if that's still the case. So I I'm writing, I'm in the process of writing it up. Just a couple of quick things. Um, the other issue on trip distribution, um, there, when I looked at the volumes, I think a lot of the trip distribution was based on sort of travel patterns in the area. There seems to be a little bit of a inconsistency in the numbers on the PM peak. Uh, at the intersection of Ellsworth and King Street, there's about a hundred and eighty cars leaving, going northbound. And they make the short block to Southwick and it's about seventy-five cars. So there's a about a hundred cars that gets lost in fifty feet or so. It's not a huge issue, but it just goes to the, you know, the trip distribution patterns. And there seems to be a lot of traffic coming down King Street, making a left onto Ellsworth. And then a return movement that makes a right turn, heads back toward King Street. And I suspecting that there is, Lowell Street is very hard to cross if you don't have a traffic signal. So I think King Street attracts traffic toward uh an area where you can use the signal to get through. And maybe it's going to the Perkins School. So I'm just pointing it out to try to understand what's going on there. Um, Scott mentioned the site distance. I just would make sure that we look at what the landscaping plans look like. Looks like they're planting some trees very close to the driveways and make sure that they're an impact of site distance. And the driveway radiuses look a little, a little small. Um, we did touch on the two traffic signals, one at King Street in Ellsworth and one at King and and Lowell. Of course, King and um Lowell Street is one of the high-hazard locations, so it's good that we're going to look at the crash rates there. It's not a level of service issue. It's more of a safety issue that Scott pointed out and we need to look at some mitigation for it. The other signal at King Street and Ellsworth Street, the volumes look pretty low for a traffic signal there. And it may have been when the hospital's in operation, but I question whether the signals are warranted there at this time. And so we ought to check to see if those, those are there. And lastly, the TDM measures, which I think are, um, you know, we need to to focus on a little bit. So those are kind of the key issues that I'm looking at in the um peer review right now. And of course, we're in COVID nineteen kind of traffic conditions. So I would say the trip generation numbers are probably, um, you know, people are staying home more, so they're probably low. But the parking ratios are probably a little bit higher just because more people aren't leaving their buildings. But we don't have those adjustments that are perfect yet for that, so we we just have to take that and sort of into our consideration. But that's my uh brief sort of summary at this point.
Great, thank you. Um.
Can I make a perhaps suggestion that's not different than any other I've made, you know, with regard to other similar projects? And that is, uh, since we are starting the traffic review, can we uh facilitate direct communication? Obviously, keeping Will uh copy to all the communication, um, you know, as it unfolds. But direct communication between Scott and Rod so that, because he he said a lot of important things, Rod did. And um certainly, as we prepare for January, I'd love to you know, facilitate that that back and forth uh directly between them.
Will, what do you think?
Is that okay, Will?
Yeah, if we're kept in a communication, um, if it's email, CC between the emails. And if there's going to be a meeting, that we're involved in those meetings and scheduled.
Okay. Is that what you, yep, Rich?
Will, are you good with that?
Scott, Scott's good.
So um, what I would just ask of Will is, once we do have the peer review uh all wrapped up, you know, everybody signed. Uh, maybe you could give me a roster of your peer reviewers with their contact information. And we'll do the same while you already have our contact information. And then, you know, Will, you can be the facilitator, obviously, and we can start, we can start that communication within the disciplines. And I think that'll be really efficient and effective in moving this forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
Rich Benavento?
There's just a couple of quick comments. Um, and and Rod obviously is is going to get into the heavy details of the study and the data and all that sort of thing. I would like to just point out a couple of things to Scott uh and the development team. Um, Rod already mentioned the Endicott Street, um, King Street, Lowell Street intersection. That is a high-crash, top-two-hundred intersection. The city had already considered uh that for some needed improvements. Of course, you know, funding is always an issue, so certainly that needs to be looked at. The other thing too is the city of PBD has an adopted complete streets policy. So while we're talking about traffic, uh, the development team should also be considering all modes of transportation. That's TDM measures being one thing. Sure, we can put the bus, you know, the bus schedule in the building. That's great. But we also need to be thinking about pedestrians and cyclists and everything else because the city has an adopted complete streets policy uh that was approved by the state and that should be considered with any development project, not just this one. Um, so just a couple of things to keep in mind. Uh, in addition, um, you know, Scott, I know you're talking about speed and that sort of thing. The city also has uh adopted the twenty-five mile per hour citywide um in a thickly settled district. So all of these things need to be considered as part of the entire package. Um, and again, you know, there's no one better uh at this than Rod Emery. Um, but some of these other things also need to be uh considered in part of this discussion.
Great, thank you. So Ezra.
I just wanted to um follow up. I I think um this idea of having peer reviewers be in touch with each other is a is a great concept. And it'll, I think, make the board's job a lot easier moving forward. You know, ideally, what what we want to put the applicant on notice about is, you know, it's great to have a meeting like this. I know there were some some issues about getting people on board. It's great to sort of have you present your stuff. Ideally, moving forward, we want to be able to present to the board these kind of consensus peer review documents where the peer reviewer can basically give you a a clean bill of health on everything. And that can really only happen when there's that back and forth ahead of time where they work out all these questions. Um, you know, so I I think that'll be great. Um, one other thing that can really help, and it was great for for Rod to point out the point about the the compact spaces. So if I could ask Scott through the chair, as I understand it, your meeting zoning in terms of the parking spaces, are there design aspects of the parking lot that you're seeking waivers from? Because remember, you need to specifically ask for the ways you're not going to meet. You mean, if it, if this were coming in under a normal process, it would have to meet all the design requirements for a parking lot. So it's, it's really important if you can flag where you're not able to do that and explain why. Because the first step should be, if you can do it, do it, right? There has to be a good reason for why you can't do it. And it might be that you think it's a better design. But but we want to sort of be able to help the peer reviewers focus on those issues. So if there are other things, you know, lane widths, turning radiuses, number of compact spaces, um, I know that the fire chief had mentioned some stuff around, um, you know, uh, you know, measuring the, for the, getting his apparatus in. We want to be sure that it all all passes muster. Um, the only other thing I wanted to throw out there that hasn't come up yet, it it did come up in the public comments last meeting. Um, most of what was raised in those comments you've addressed, but there was one- there was one which talked about not, not the visibility for turning, you know, which you've addressed, but more the concern of if there are cars parked on the streets, can you see kids walking, especially, you know, if it's a low light situation? So if you could give some thought to that, to make sure it's, that we're not creating unsafe situations for kids who are walking, who may be screened by SUVs, or those are things parked along the way. And if so, what are the ways we, you know, we deal with that? So that's, I think, all I had, other than, you know, making sure that we do get comments back from fire prevention as well, so the board feels comfortable moving ahead. Thanks.
Through the chair, I'm sorry. I forgot one other thing, if I could.
Sure.
Just one other thing I also wanted to bring out is the city just completed a complete streets project on Perkins Street with connectivity and all those sorts of things that are necessary for that. And I don't believe that Perkins Street at Ellsworth Street was included as part of this study. And I'm sure that, you know, Rod can, can opine on that, whether that's, it's necessary or not. But there was a significant investment of complete streets money and city money in putting complete streets initiatives on Perkins Street. So just again, if, if there's housing going in, families going in, there should be some consideration for connectivity to, to what was just completed as well. Again, just a thought to throw out there for consideration that the developer may be wanting to think about.
Thank you. So do we have anybody else with questions or comments at this point? All right, then. No attendees?
You're taking public comment as well at the moment? Is that right?
I don't, I don't think that, yes, we are. But I don't think there's anybody- Okay, Mr. Christopher, you have a question? You have to unmute yourself, Mr. Christopher.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I live over on Ellsworth Road, and I'm just curious about the traffic report. My wife and I live here, you know, and recently we have to park in the street temporarily because we're doing construction on our home. But we've just had two vehicles totaled. One of them was a month ago, where a car came by and hit it. And I just had an accident Saturday with my pickup truck going down King Street across Lowell from a driver that blew a red light. So I just think that these things need to be considered when they're doing the traffic report. Also, I think Ellsworth Road, it just doesn't line up with other intersections. If you look down Ellsworth, everything's off. And it makes it really difficult for cars to pass. There's a lot of near misses with, with the cars when they're driving by, almost hitting other cars that are parked. I see this every day. And I think this is something the traffic report's not looking at. You get a lot of people cutting through here, and a lot of cars are going pretty fast. So I just wanted to give that information to the traffic report part of this. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
That was great information. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, I don't believe, I don't believe there's anybody else. So, okay, at this point, I think that we have some things that we have to think about, some things that will be happening moving forward. And one of the things that we're going to do moving forward is to set a date for a January hearing for this project. Kurt, I have a question for you. Do you, will there be any sort of inauguration on January 4th? Do you know?
Yes, as far as I know, they always have a midterm inauguration set for that first Monday. I'm not sure if some part of that would be in public, I mean, in person, or all of it would be on Zoom. But typically, they, for the last 30 years, they've had one every, every first Monday in January.
Okay. So we're looking at, we're looking, people at the 11th, not the 18th, because that is Martin Luther King Day, I believe, is it? The 18th, yep. So we're looking at the 25th of January to be our normally regularly scheduled meeting. And Jason, what do you think?
I'm around on the 11th. I think the important thing is giving Rod Emery and World Tech enough time. You know, I think, I think we'll have a month with intervening holidays. But to allow for a conversation between Scott and Rod and Will and Rich Benevento, to kind of, as Ezra indicated, narrow down what the issues of contention are. We obviously shouldn't talk about things we agree on, except to say, hey, we, this is our list of things we agree on. I don't think a month gives us enough time to do that, but I'm only one person in this. Through the chair?
Yep.
Fran, just, just keep in mind, though, if we, if we are going to submit this letter, which we voted on, which we will be, by December 15th, Attorney Panos has up until December 30th, give or take, to respond. And then the, the department will have until, up until potentially January 29th. So to, to schedule a meeting on January 11th, I think is aggressive. No matter how quickly Attorney Panos responds and how quickly we get a decision from the Department of Community Housing. So my suggestion would be to potentially go into the early month of, of early February.
Okay, so for the sake of all of this, and I know it's a lot of what ifs and maybes, and, and perhaps, why don't we, Jason, are you okay with February 8th? Is that too far?
I, no, not necessarily. But, you know, as I indicated in the, in the Safe Harbor part of the presentation, all it does is stop the toll, it tolls the 180-day period. It doesn't prevent the board from moving forward in working out subsequent issues. It doesn't stop action. So just because we have that process playing out, and I've already given you my opinion on how I think it's gonna, gonna resolve, be that as it may, it doesn't stop action until DHCD comes out with a letter and says, you know what, City of PBD, you're right. And then at that point, we've got some serious thinking to do apart, apart from that. But I, I think we should just continue to move forward on parallel tracks. There's nothing that prevents us from going forward on a, on a, on a safe harbor. And by the way, you know-
What's going to happen on the 11th?
Even if the matter doesn't get resolved, I mean, even if the matter does get resolved, it just sits in everybody's interest to keep this moving forward.
The inauguration is on the floor. Okay.
Those are my two cents.
Okay. Give me one minute here.
Yeah.
For the next meeting, Jason, at any rate, while I'm waiting, I have to check a date. What, what will be your pleasure of presenting or talking about or whatever on the next meeting?
Well, I think we still continue with traffic, because we're still waiting for the peer review side of things. And I, I really do think that, you know, to Ezra's point back in October, this is one of the big issues that's going to take a while, I think, to, to fully vet.
Okay.
I think after traffic-
I think we could move on to stormwater in that meeting as well, I would hope, but-
Yeah, I think all the civil issues.
Okay, so, so, so I have a conflict on the 11th of January?
Okay.
So could we, I mean, I could, I could-
February 8th is fine.
Okay, February 8th.
Yeah.
And I would, I would really add, I don't think it's quite so much how frequently you have meetings, as much as how much you resolve issues, you know, and make those meetings useful and, you know, inefficient. So if you have your peer reviewers working on parallel tracks, getting the traffic stuff, the stormwater stuff locked down, you present a nice clean bill of health, Jason said yes to everything they've asked for, you could meet on February 8th and move right through a lot of that. So-
Okay, so let, let's, let's try to get as much done February 8th as we can. Let's try to get through, yes, Will?
So Fran, so if it's February 8th, I would say that we should have at least something to discuss for water.
Good.
Waste water, traffic, and stormwater. We should be able to hit on all four topics at that meeting.
Perfect. I'm going to plan on, I'm going to hold you to that.
That's fine. You're far enough out. So I'm pretty confident, but I'll just, I want to get clarification. We're obviously going to engage the peer reviewers while you guys on a parallel track, while this ZBA is going down the road of Safe Harbor, that we are going to continue with the peer reviewers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure, because I don't want to spend the applicant's money.
Oh, no, no, no.
We want to go down both tracks at the same time. That's fine.
Right. Okay.
So just for clarification, Madam Chair, so on February 8th, when we do all the civil issues, I put that basket of stormwater management, you know, design in one basket. It's going to be our presentation with the expectation that peer review will follow at a subsequent hearing? Or is it the, and I guess I'm asking through Will, through you to Will, is it the expectation that the city would also put on its peer review at the same time?
That's what I'm hoping.
Okay.
Will, is that what you're hoping?
Yes, unless, Jason, unless you guys decide to change something with stormwater, I know we're going out this week to do some testing. So unless you guys change the path of stormwater, we'll be, our, our team will be ready at the same time.
So Will, can you get me that roster of everybody? On your, on your team?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
My, my, my board, and you are my board. Everybody okay February 8th, as far as you know today?
Yes.
Okay. And then our regularly scheduled meeting in February, just because of, we're talking about it, will be the 22nd. So at this point in time, where am I? Oh, yeah, because we're going to meet next week anyways. So let's have a motion to continue this to February 8th.
Motion to continue this until February 8th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We, I have, I need a couple of other motions, but just to remind everybody, next, I don't even know what month I'm in, next Monday will be a regularly scheduled meeting. Plus, 27 Riafamav. Forty Oak Street has asked for a continuance. Kurt, you're going to work on that timeline for me, right?
Yes, I think the communication today was they weren't, they didn't think they were going to be ready for Monday. So they were looking to try to find another date. And I suggested maybe in January. So I think, I told them it would probably be discussed at the meeting next week. If they wanted to at least request something towards the end of January, that would cover any meeting in January. And if that happened, we could vote next week and give them the date.
Okay, Will?
Fran, yeah, Forty Oak reached out to us recently. So I'm going to try to set up a meeting with them. They have some questions regarding stormwater. I'm not saying that's why they're asking for continuance, but that's most likely why. They want to get some clarification.
Could you maybe put that on the top of your list?
Yeah, I've already actually had the meeting with Horsey Whitten and the director in respect to the request. And now I just need to circle back with Forty Oak, now that I have some answers for them.
Okay, thank you. So I now need a motion to notify, no, I need a motion to accept the correspondence from the planning board. So what, I'll, I'll read this to everybody. The PBD Planning Board at their November 5th and 19th meetings discussed the comprehensive permit application submitted for 15 King Street currently before the Board of Appeals. At these meetings, the board described concern over the following: potential strain on the city's school system, strain on the city's infrastructure, water and sewer, impacts on traffic in the area, especially the abutting intersection of King and Lowell Street. The Planning Board offers these comments to the Board of Appeals to take into consideration when reviewing the application. May I have a motion to accept that?
Motion to accept. Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And we, we already made the motion for the February meeting. And I need a motion to approve the November 9th meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
At this point in time, we have gone a record length of the ZBA. It is now, what is it, 928? However, for everything that was discussed, extremely important issues, you know, lots of, lots and lots of information. Once again, I thank you. You guys are great. And I'm very happy that we're going to meet again next week. So thank you all. Have a drink, go to bed, get a good night's rest, and I'll see you next week.
Can we make a motion to continue, Fran?
Yes.
You did? Okay.
But I need a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn, yeah.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, members of the board. Thank you, everybody. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.